All right, a call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, December 8th, 2015 at 7:00, and we will start with roll call.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Mike Den.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Barbara Stackhausen.
Here.
Tom Knoll.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
And Amy Seboth Wilson.
Here.
First item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from our November 24th special and regular meetings. B is payment of bills. C is financial report for November. D, appointments to boards and commissions. I have none this evening. E is licenses. We have a change of agent for Walgreens Company, and one-year and two-year operator licenses are in your packet, and also taxi vehicle and driver license applications. Next is a permit for street closing for the Platteville Regional Chamber for the Southwest Music Festival on July 30th, it should be, 2016, and a request for a six-month extension for banking RFP. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
With a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Nichols.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Knoll.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, and we have one request from Jerry DeShane to speak about Councilor Nichols. Just thought I'd put that in there. Something happening to us.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be fairly brief. First to introduce myself, I'm Jerry DeShane. I'm the executive director of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Those of you on the council, I'm sure know, but for the citizens, the audience members, and others, the league represents all of the cities in Wisconsin, including, of course, Platteville. We've been around for 117 years. We lobby on behalf of cities and villages. We also provide education and a variety of other services to local government, been doing it for quite a while. We could not do it without the guidance and leadership of our 16-person board of directors, and until October of this year, Alderwoman Nichols was a member of our board of directors. So on behalf of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, I am here to recognize and thank Eileen Nichols for her dedicated service from the years 2011 through 2015. And just to say personally, I'm fairly new with the league. I've only been there about a year and a half. Prior to that, we'd only had four other executive directors in 117 years. So we don't change much. So obviously, Alderwoman Nichols had her hands full with a lot of changes and a lot of things that were stirred up both before and after, and she was one of very many steady hands on the wheel, and I thank you very much for that, Eileen. Thank you.
I will say that I definitely enjoyed my time, and I was very proud to represent southwest Wisconsin on the board. I have no other citizens' comments, observations, or petitions, so we'll move on to reports. We have Board Commission Committee minutes. The Police and Fire Commission, Den.
Nothing to add.
Commission on Aging, Killian.
Nothing to add.
Other reports in the packet include the city attorney's itemized report for November, a water and sewer financial report, also for November, and the November Airport Financial Report, as well as department progress reports. Any questions on any of those?
I have one part. It's for the DPW. Going to the report, and maybe Amy also, going to report as far as usage, November, and I'm trying to find out what RBOGP means.
Oh, on the top of the, on the top of the report.
Heading.
The heading. Those are the...
I'll be meeting with the Commission on Aging and maybe talking about this, so I need to know what it means.
Okay. Those are the, those are the route designations. Red, red, orange, blue, green, and purple. Those are, those are the route designations.
Okay, then another question is about, how do you get this information? It says under 1855. Adults, 400 versus UWP 5830, and over 65 is three people. So how are you making those distinctions as far as over 65, under 18?
The university ones are very easy because those, those students, they swipe their university ID card. There's a, there's a little swipe thing, so that, that's easy to track. The rest of them are a subjective evaluation by the, by the bus drivers. We, the drivers do not ask for ages or anything like that. If they see what appear to be schoolchildren getting on to get off at the middle school or the high school, then they'll mark them as under 18. If there are people who appear to be over 65, that's what they'll do, but they won't, they won't ask them.
I want to highlight that real quick. Can, it says 65. It looks like it says 55.
It should be 65.
Yeah, 65, okay. Not that it's a huge difference, but important to note. Well, right, right. Okay, I mean, when you're guessing and looking at somebody, it's still sort of a guess, is what I meant.
Yes.
Put a little line in there and say routes, or else make a legend for those.
I do, as long as we're on that. I noted on your report, Howard, that it says reestablish the Platteville Public Transportation Committee. And I have had several, several people ask me why the buses stop on Pine Street and line up at, like, yeah, right, line up there. And if, even, I mean, the question is, isn't that kind of dangerous? So, you know, I guess as you reestablish the Platteville Public Transportation Committee, I don't want an answer on this tonight. I'm just saying that I've had several people comment on that, and I would ask that your transportation committee review that. The other thing I noticed is we've had a big yellow bus that says Platteville Public Transportation on it.
Okay. I can answer a few things. First off is we're going to have our public transportation meeting this Friday night at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. It's, it's an open meeting for, for many people, anybody who wants to come in and review and comment, just like any other committee meeting. Second of all, that, that place that you're talking about happens to be where all three routes come together at the same time, the red, the orange, and the, and the blue route. And so that was, that was an area that was identified as where they all kind of come together all at the same time.
It's a transfer point.
As a transfer point, and we will look at that.
I'm just asking that you review that.
We, we will look at that, you know, as far as the timing and everything else. The other question that you had was regarding the, the yellow school bus. What happens is sometimes when one of the regular white ones goes down and, and is down for maintenance or, or service, what, what the bus service does is they substitute a regular school bus, and they put the transportation placard on there so that people can identify it as that instead of a, a regular school bus. Hopefully, it's not seen very often on many of the routes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Barb reminded me of one more thing. The transportation committee, is that going to be reformed? If so, I would recommend that there be a senior citizen member on it, if yours not at the present time. Is that Amy?
Howard said that the next meeting is this Friday night at 6:00 here in the council chambers.
Yes, but when is the committee going to be constituted?
What we did was, was we used the same membership that was on the committee back in February and March when, when we were doing this initially. I have made it a point to invite Connie Steinhoff as the senior citizens representative. If she wants to come herself, or, or if a member of the Commission on Aging wants to come and, and be a part of this, that, that's fine. You know, we're, we're willing to work with and ask for suggestions from anyone like that.
Okay, thank you. And my other thing I brought up was the legend.
Sure, I, I have that.
When I, when I read something, I'd like people to figure it out, and I couldn't figure this out. Thank you.
Any other questions, anyone? All right, the first action item is Resolution 1531, Appointing Election Officials for Years 2016 through 2017. Jan, anything?
This is a resolution we do every two years for a new election cycle, and by state statute, the council needs to appoint the election officials for the next cycle. And then I was asking that you give me the authority to hire additional election officials if needed throughout the next two years, as you've done in the past.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 1531, Appointing Election Officials for the Years 2016, 2017, as presented for the 2016-2017 election term, and give the city clerk the authority to hire additional election officials as needed.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Any questions? We'll vote.
Nichols.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Knoll.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 1532, Appointment of the Assessor for 2016. The staff report is in your packet. Any questions?
And this is an annual resolution, just appointing the city assessor. We're appointing, would like to appoint Brad Cupp of Accurate Appraisal LLC for 2016.
I move we adopt Resolution 1532, Official Appointment of City Assessor Brad Cupp of Accurate Appraisal LLC as the 2016 Assessor for the city.
Second.
With a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Nichols.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Knoll.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 1533, Authorizing Issuance and Awarding the Sale of, and actually the number has changed, is 3,790,000. That will be explained in a few minutes. Taxable General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds Series 2015B, and also the related budget amendments, since this was not budgeted for the year. Dwayne?
Yes, the city of Platteville has two projects the city needs to borrow for before the end of the year. The, the first project is for the purchase and demolition of the downtown Pioneer Ford properties. The estimated amount to borrow for this project is approximately $655,000, with the rest of the project being paid from an SAG grant and a CDBG grant. The second project is for the amount that's owed to the developer of the library block project. With the council approving the library block development agreement at the November 24th council meeting, the amount owed to the developer would be an amount of $2 million. The city also has an opportunity to refinance a $1,070,000 taxable note anticipation note that has balloon payment coming up in early 2016, in order to save money on legal fees, issuance costs, and receive a lower interest rate. With the larger borrowing, this money will be refinanced also. Don Gonderson is here for, from LRS to further explain this.
Good evening. You've been provided with two documents. The award resolution, which was prepared today by your bond attorney, Quarles and Brady. I believe you probably saw draft of this resolution in your packet. Quarles has updated this today with the results of today's competitive sale, so the action you'll be taking will be approving this resolution with the lower amount that was presented in the introduction. The second document is called a sale day report, and I'd like to walk through that with you. Last month, on your November meeting, my colleague Phil Cosson was here, and you took action to authorize us to proceed with the issuance of this debt issue. And this morning at 11:00, we took competitive bids for the sale of that issue, and this document then will summarize that for you. So if you turn to the first page behind the cover, this schedule is kind of a recap of the entire bond sale, and I'll walk through the accompanying schedules.
We received this. This packet, it's from you, I believe.
That was pre, that was...
Preliminary official statement for dated, dated December 1.
Yes. That document was what was prepared after you authorized the sale. There was a preliminary official statement that was prepared. That's a prospectus, much like an investment document. So that was prepared, sent out to the market. It went out nationally, regionally. It was posted in the National Bond Buyer, and that's the document that went out for the sale. So investors have the opportunity to review that and to bid and invest in these debt instruments.
You're not going to go over that.
I will not go over that, no.
There are some questions on the first, on the cover page, and I guess my assumption would be that those have all been answered.
They, it's been reviewed. It was reviewed by your bond attorney, reviewed by staff, and any other questions have been addressed. Now, there will be a final of that document that will be released once you approve the sale. That would go out tomorrow, awarding the bonds to the winner, the winning bid. And so basically, it would just update the, the results of today's sale.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So this morning, we, I might add, once that preliminary official statement was completed, we conducted a rating review call with Standard and Poor's. They have previously rated the city of Platteville, and I'm pleased to report that they affirmed the city's double A, or double A minus rating, and have also assigned that same rating to this debt issue. And I applaud you on that strong rating. It certainly is a reflection of the management here in the city of Platteville. And it definitely, it's much like a credit rating on an individual, your credit score. It, it translates into lower interest cost when you do go out into a municipal bond market. So I believe that today's competitive sales reflective of that. We did receive three bids this morning, and our lowest bid is BASK, which is a division of Bank of Oklahoma, and I'll kind of walk through the tabulation of those bids. The determination for a winning bid is the lowest cost to the community for issuing the debt. So what we've compared here is between our high and our low, and we see value in doing this on a competitive basis. Our low bid on the TIC, which is the true interest cost, was 3.2082, and our high bid was 3.4139. So the difference of interest cost between the high and the low bid is just under $76,000. So you can just, and we had a bid that was in between there. So again, this is an opportunity to take that low bid, the 3.2 percent. The table in the middle kind of summarizes some things, but I'll walk through those documents that follow this that will further explain that. And as was mentioned, there are two, two components, primarily financing projects for tax increment District Number 7, and refinancing an existing note anticipation note out there that had a balloon payment that's coming due. And I'll also show you the, the breakout of that as well. So if you turn to the next page, page three of the document, this is what's referred to as the bid tabulation. This tabulates the three bids that we received, and they're in order of the low bid to the high bid. So the first one identified on this schedule is BASK, the Bank of Oklahoma. And with municipal bonds, each year's maturity holds its own coupon or its own interest rate. So you'll see here, for each maturity, where you're beginning in 17, you'll see a different interest rate, and that's the rate the investor will receive on those documents and the rate that the city will pay. On the far right, then, we've identified the true interest rate, which is the average cost of these interest coupons, as well as the, the fee that's paid to the underwriter to, to place the debt. And you'll see that the true interest cost is 3.28 percent. Now, we've adjusted the sizing downward, and I'll, I'll explain that when we get into the sizing. So our adjusted tick is a little bit lower than that because we reduced the amount of principal that you're borrowing. The next page, then, is the two bids bared. Out of Milwaukee was the, the next bid at 3.36, and Piper Jaffrey out of Minneapolis was the third bid at 3.4139. So that's the tabulation of the bid. It includes their bid rates as well, identified on the, on the schedule, but it's that TIC is the determining for that, that low bid. Now, I mentioned that the sizing of the debt was lowered. So if you turn to page five, what we've done here is identified the comparison between our preliminary planning estimates and our actual sale today. As I mentioned, also, this is, there were two purposes, financing your projects within TID Number 7, and then a portion that's refinancing the ban. So in total, our new debt size is 3,790,000. We reduced the total principal amount of the bonds by 25,000. And we were able to do that because our preliminary estimates on cost were a little bit higher than what they actually came in on the bids. So we estimated the Quarles and Brady fee, and that was a little bit lower. There was, we had some compliance fees. There was an estimate, but it was determined to do that internally and just pay on an hourly basis, so there was a reduction there. A little bit of reduction in the rating fee. We did not have term bonds, so there's no need for a paying agent. You'll serve as your own paying agent. But the, the primary one is there's an underwriter discount, and an underwriter discount is the, what's paid to an underwriter to place your debt in the market. Any municipal bonds will have an underwriter discount. Sometimes it's built into the rates. We require in a competitive sale that they bid that. They disclose it upfront as a line item. So that's a bid item. It's, it's calculated in that TIC. We had estimated that to be $10 a bond or $10,000. That came in at less, like four, little over four and a half. So instead of 38,000 from our estimate, that was 17. So that's the biggest reduction. But the combination of everything allowed us to reduce the total principal amount by 25,000. So the award resolution will be for 3,790. And then to kind of show you the details and structured savings, on page six, what we've done here is, is taken your existing debt, offsetting any revenues. Those are the tables on the far left. The breakout of these two issues, again, the portion that's related to tax increment District Number 7, there's a column, several columns headed with that in the middle of the page, and then the portion to refinance the NAN over a 10-year time period. And then the columns in gray-blue are, are the total issue. So the, the structure for the total issue, which was, has been adjusted with the downsizing of the issue, is identified here. And to kind of recap the significance of this page is the cost at the bottom, we've compared the total cost with the preliminary, and both in the principal and interest, for the projects within tax increment District Number 7. The combination of the reduction in the amount of principal and the lower interest cost than we had preliminary estimated, the projects to finance will be about $84,000 less than, than the numbers that you reviewed when you authorized us to proceed, as well as the, the NAN refinancing. It's about $17,600 less than the planning estimates. So in total, the, today's sales results generated about $101,000, almost $102,000 less in total cost than the planning estimates that were put together when you authorized us to proceed. So very positive results in terms of the, the interest savings today. The other thing to, to, just key to point out here on page seven of this document, you had a note anticipation note outstanding. It had a million-dollar balloon payment coming due in 16. So we took the opportunity to, to take that out for a 10-year restructuring. This schedule shows the previous principal and interest payments and the projection. Now, recognizing that you're paying this over an extended period of time, there's certainly going to be a future cost, but because of the favorable interest rates, in reality, there's a net present value savings of having done this of just under $20,000. So even though there's an overall cost, in today's dollar, there was a savings by taking this out and comparing what you were paying, and actually the benefit of doing it a little bit early than when it, when it came due later this year. So having done it now versus waiting and paying it, you're actually having a, a present value savings. The last schedule, pull-out schedule attached to this is just an updated, when Phil was here last month, he had several analysis on the tax increment, the impact of this financing in your tax increment District Number 7. This is just an update of those, one of those schedules now with the new interest rates, and it also reflects some sharing from tax increment District Number 5, and the projections for the library block development. So the, the financing of this project will, will be an improvement to that cash flow, about $84,000 from what was presented at that last meeting. So that's attached there as well. The final documents are the rating report from S&amp;P, so I encourage you to read that if you haven't had the opportunity up until now to do that. That was released Monday of this week, so that's included in this document. And we always think it's important to understand where interest rates are in the municipal market. So the very last page of this document is a recap of the last 12 months of the municipal market for a 20-year bond issue. So you can see that rates have dropped early in the year, hit their peak in June, and we actually kind of hit it as it was coming down from another spike towards the end of December. So I think it timed out well that you hit the end of the year at, at a lower-than-average cost. The gold bar across the middle is the average for the entire 12-month period. So rates today were, were lower than they've been on average for the year. So congratulations on a positive sale outcome, and I'm certainly glad to answer any questions any of you may have.
Do you want to comment?
Questions, anyone?
Oh, one, one other thing to note. When, when Phil was here last month, he talked about different ways of financing these projects, and one of them was comparing it to the state trust fund loan, which is, which is an excellent loan program. It certainly has many good attributes to it, and so, and there's, you can go into that loan program with some lower upfront issuance expenses, and then, but it is a little bit more restrictive on structure. So Phil kind of walked through that, compared it to the municipal bond market, where there are, obviously, your rating costs, your attorney fees, and advisory fees, and a few other things that go into play. And they were, on our initial analysis, they were pretty close, if you were comparing apples to apples, if you did not do the structuring to, to wrap it with your TIF. So we, we felt that when we came to last month, that there may be a little bit more cost by structuring the debt and delaying some principal. Well, the positive news to that today is we looked at the, what we call the AIC, the entire cost, including all of the issuance expenses, the attorney fee, the rating fee, everything included in that, compared that to the state trust fund. State trust fund is a 3.75 right now for the, the duration of the issue you were doing, and this, today, in the AIC came in at just under three point, under 3.5 percent, so about 3.47 percent. So it truly was a better option to do this, and a cheaper way to finance these projects than it would have been to go to the state trust fund. So just think that's important. And it, it can be different every time, but I think it's important to understand that, you know, as we review these, we'll always look at, at the choices that you have.
Questions, anyone?
I have a question. I received this in my packet, which is the resolution, and I received this tonight, resolution. Are both the same, exact wording?
The, the resolution is the same with a couple exceptions. One, the dollar amount went down. So at the very title, you'll see that there, the, the white copy that was handed out says 3,790. The one that was in your packet probably said 3,815. So you're approving a lower dollar amount. The only other thing is there, there... The only other thing is there were a lot of blank schedules, sample schedules in here. So what your bond attorneys did today is they populated it with the actual sale results now, identified the winning bidder as Bosc, and incorporated the change in the principal payments, and then the new interest rates based upon the actual sales. So they've included that in what was handed out to you. And they can't do that until they get the results of the sale, so that's why it was handed out to you tonight.
And I read in here that we can't redeem anything until after 2024?
That's correct. There's the, there's a point that the bonds become callable, that the investors will hold those bonds until you have the opportunity to prepay at that point or not, and that...
But we can refinance them.
You could, you can refinance at that time as a current refinancing. You can always advance refinance and put money in escrow. It costs a little bit more to do that, but you know, you do have that flexibility, but under a normal call provision, they would be, would be currently callable on that call date.
How many, how many people comfortably buy bond insurance? Percentage?
Bond, for...
Well, I read this section about buying bond insurance.
What we did is we offered the ability for the investor to purchase bond insurance at their expense. We didn't have any, none of the underwriters asked for it to be insured. And your bond rating is strong enough that there really isn't too many insurances that could give you a better rating than that. At one time, there were AAA-rated insurance companies, and we saw a lot more of that, but anymore, it's not, it's not as commonplace. So very few in answer to your question.
And I was trying to figure out section 16, redemption of the refunded obligation. Is that in this new one?
That's the, what you will be doing is you will be paying off that ban a little bit earlier than it was its due date. So that's what that is, the redemption of that refunding. You'll be doing that in January.
We pay that January 13th.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's earlier than it was, your normal schedule would have paid that later, so you're saving some money by paying it early.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
And my understanding again is that we need a resolution that authorizes the issuance and awarding the sale of $3,790,000 taxable general obligation corporate purchase bonds, series 2015B, and the related budget amendments. Is that correct, Dwayne?
Yes.
I make a motion, we adopt resolution 1533, $3,790,000 in taxable general obligation corporate purpose bonds and the accompanying...
Budget amendments, since it was not budgeted. Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Over motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I think we probably will have a big discussion on this one. Consideration to cancel December 22nd council meeting.
Don't move. I say no.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
No.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is a conditional use permit for leased parking in the Browning Family Partnership and Darryl Browning. And Joe, I think you have something on this?
Yes, this is actually already been approved. If you recall back in May of this year, the council approved the conditional use permit for those properties, 1575 South Chestnut Street. They do leased parking on that site for residents in that neighborhood. That conditional use was approved with some conditions. They were supposed to do hard surfacing of the parking lot, mark the stalls, install landscaping, a retaining wall, some site lighting, and the council approved that with the conditions that those improvements be completed by December 1st. As of today, the retaining wall has been constructed, some additional lighting has been added. They did install some landscaping in the area where they put in that retaining wall. However, the hard surfacing of the lot has not been completed. They do have some stall marking on the site, but a lot of that is gravel or unimproved, so it's hard to maintain those markings. So as of this point in time, not all of those conditions have been met by the December 1st time period. The main one is the hard surfacing requirement. They have provided a letter to me that indicates Iverson Construction is under contract to provide the paving of that lot. They don't have a firm date on that, but just said that it would not be able to be completed until 2016. So I guess at this point, staff is looking for some direction from the council as far as how you'd like us to proceed. You know, I see two primary options. You know, if anybody has any additional ones, that's fine as well, but you know, the first one is since technically it would, it's, they're not in compliance with the requirements of the approval, which is a zoning approval, they would be in violation of the zoning ordinance, so we could begin enforcement action, which basically would be the issuance of citations until the conditions have been met or the property is no longer used for leased parking. Or the other option would be to provide an extension to that deadline to give them additional time to make those completions. If that option is the one that's selected, staff would just suggest that the new deadline be prior to September of 2016, so we make sure they're in compliance before the next semester starts when most of the vehicles will return to that property. So as I mentioned, we are looking for some guidance. Any questions?
Joe, there's supposed to be landscaping. How much of that is actually done compared to what's required?
Well, it wasn't really defined as far as how much was required. It just basically said the area that is a hard surface should have some landscaping provided. At this point, when they, when they put in the retaining wall on the north part of the site, they installed some plantings in that area, basically on the corner of Chestnut and Gridley. And the rest of the site hasn't been hard surfaced yet, so there hasn't been any additional work done.
Joe, in the original discussion of this, I made a motion that, that a landscape plan and a lighting plan would be required. Have you received a landscape plan and/or a lighting plan?
I have not received either one.
So there, that is in non-compliance also then?
Yeah, like I said, they installed some landscaping and a light, but not an official plan. Correct.
One question I have, Joe, and obviously it's not something you can answer, only the Brownings could answer, but I observed that property all summer long, and I didn't see anything being done in most of the summer. They didn't start to do anything until later on, like late August or even maybe in September. And now we have the issue that it didn't get the hard surface, and obviously we're getting pretty close to the weather conditions, and that's why. But if they'd have started sooner, it could have all been completed. I was kind of curious why they didn't start right away when they had the conditional use permit.
Yeah, Dennis is here to answer that question, but when he'd been talking to me throughout the summer, it was, he was waiting for the contractor to do the work, but he could provide some additional information on that.
Do you come up to the microphone, please? You will give your name, please.
I am Dennis Browning, 345 South Chestnut Street. I'm executive partner Browning Family Partnership. I cannot force contractors to come to a small operation. J&amp;N said they'd do it. I said, "When?" And they gave me a date in June. June became July. I started screaming and yelling and threatening, and then they finally said, "Okay." And literally, a week before school, they showed up. But I am a small business. Now, the landscaping, I didn't bring all the stuff with me, but I did show where we were going to put the plants and keep them watered. I did show where we were going to put the light, and so far, it works out good. So far, it's well-lit, it's well-policed, and we only had one problem child this semester, and that individual is gone. Everything has worked out. I have been working with Iverson, and they said, "We will come up and we will start paving, but you're going to be a fill-in job. You're not big enough for us to deploy all of our equipment." I said, "Fair enough, as long as it's done relatively quick." And by relatively quick, I meant by middle of August. And he said, "We have some big jobs up in the Platteville area that is doable." But I have a golden rule, I never make a promise I can't keep. We have done the lighting. If you go down and look, it's very well-lit, and it doesn't impede and shine into my neighbors' windows. But yet, people feel safe because it is lit and lit well. The landscaping looks nice, and because we have a very nice mild winter, what we've done should survive. There is one area that we left alone because that's where we plow snow, that's where we pile it up. Now, I have a bigger-than-expected expense. We had to come up with a new plow vehicle. That was supposed to have been done first of October. If I'm lucky, I'll pick it up tomorrow. If not, I'm going to have to argue with Driveline even more because the last big snowstorm we had, a man pushing 70 years old was on a tractor basically the same age as him, and we were moving snow. Thank God it melted. Now, do you have specific questions?
Any questions for Mr. Browning?
So you don't have a exact date when Iverson can help you?
Iverson gave me a range of middle of August, middle of July, because that's when he is going to be up here someplace in the immediate area doing a big paving job. But I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know if we're going to have a wet, miserable spring. You tell me. If somebody would have told me I'd be picking nightcrawlers out of my woodpile in December, I would have laughed at them. But they're there. I, are we going to have a drought? Last time we had a year like this, it was a drought, at which point it would be done early. But are we going to have floods? I don't know. I'm dealing with outdoor construction. I don't have a crystal ball to say, "Yeah, we're going to have severe storms and rain for eight, 10 weeks." Or are we going to have a drought? If it's a drought, then Iverson will do his big job. He'll come down and do ours, and everybody should be happy.
Any other questions from the council?
How many times have we had, probably Joe, have we dealt with an extension on this project? Have we had more than one extension?
For, well, the conditional use permit was just approved in May, so we have not had an extension.
And you did receive a plan for the landscaping and lighting plan? You did receive that, like we have on here?
I didn't. I think he said he has one, but I haven't seen it.
I gave you on that map, I showed you where I wanted the light, and I showed you where Someplace in here.
I mean, I remember him indicating where the light was going to go, but I don't recall ever seeing anything specific about landscaping, so...
Because I asked, you know what I said?
Personally, I'm not concerned about that. I think the big issue is the paving.
Okay, what do we...
Okay, if nobody else has any questions for Mr. Browning, thank you.
My understanding of the comments that have been made, and I voted against this motion in the first place because I felt that the timeline established was unrealistic and said at the time that it was unrealistic. I don't know. What I hear, say, what I am hearing now is that there is no expectation that this will be blacktopped much before August 15th of 2016, at the earliest, which is 15 months after this was adopted.
So what recommendation can we make for staff?
I recommend option two, which is to give until September 2016.
And then what?
I, I think September is too late. School starts September 1st, so I think you should set August 15th if you're going to set a date, one that has the project done before the start of school.
Joe, what is the cost of a citation, and when is it issued?
Well, the first, the first one, technically, the citation is $50, but with court costs, it's around $200, and then subsequent citations, it's increased.
Okay. How many, if you issue one citation, when do you issue an additional one if it's not remedied?
Well, that depends on the nature of the violation. We usually issue a citation, give a reasonable amount of time for them to achieve compliance, and then issue another citation if it's not achieved. The issue with this problem this time of the year is, you know, they can't achieve compliance. As far as hard surfacing, their alternative would be to not allow the parking next semester, basically.
Okay.
So if we were to proceed with that, I would probably issue a citation, you know, wait, because most of the students would leave in a couple of weeks, and then begin again when they show up next semester.
Okay. If we left it go until August 15th and it wasn't completed by that time, you'd issue a citation, then if it's still not completed, let's say by September 1st, would you issue another citation?
Technically, we would wait until the vehicles showed up again at the beginning of the semester, so we would judge that depending on when that started to occur. And then it would probably be, I'm guessing, weekly or every couple of weeks.
We have nothing in the ordinance that states when a citation would be issued?
No, no.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion? Do you want to make a motion?
No.
Well, I've heard two suggestions. One is the September 2016 deadline, and the other one is the August fifteenth, I think you said. In discussion on either one of those recommendations?
I guess I have one more question. I don't know, this is a little bit nitpicky, but obviously, we knew a month ago that this wasn't gonna get done. How come this is on our agenda tonight, December first, asking for an extension when the deadline was, or December eighth, asking for an extension when the deadline was December first? Did it come to you before this, Joe, or does this just came up this week?
Uh, well, technically, they weren't in violation until December first, and this is the first meeting.
Okay, so did you put it on the agenda, or was the extended requested?
I put it on the agenda when he submitted the letter saying it would be paved until next year.
And then you got that letter when?
Right around Thanksgiving.
Okay, so not very much notice. Thank you.
Any further discussion, otherwise we would entertain a motion.
Move that we allow the extension until Sep- August fifteenth.
But I think that's a firm date.
We have a motion to extend the deadline until August fifteenth of 2016. Any other discussion?
As I mentioned, that I expect this to be a exact date and no more extensions without proceeding with the issuance of citations.
We'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Scott Cousin?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, the next item is information discussion, Jones Street discontinuation and right-of-way encroachment. Joe?
Yeah, there's a, a project being worked on that would involve a expansion of the Steve's Pizza building. They'd like to expand that building to the east. Be a three-story building addition for brewery and expanded restaurant space. That expansion would be on private property. They basically would be, to the east is where the parking and driveway currently is for that property. That's where the addition would go, so the driveway and parking would be moved further east where the viewpoint screening building is. That building would be demolished to make way for the driveway and parking. Also, the building behind Steve's Pizza where Elements and previous to that where the office supply building was, that would be removed for additional parking, which is private property. But in that area behind, basically in the middle of that block, there is a remnant of a street, Jones Street, was part of the original Platte, of the city of Platteville that connected that alley by Hardick Drug to Main Street. Actually, most of that right-of-way had been vacated back in nineteen seventy-five, but there is a, a remnant back there yet. Part of that right-of-way is being proposed or petitioned for discontinuance by the applicant. They need additional room for the equipment, potentially some silos for the grain storage for the brewery. That, their, their proposed location for that is within that right-of-way area. So they're requesting the northern thirty-two feet of that remaining Jones Street be discontinued. They would propose a easement along part of that discontinued easement or right-of-way to provide access to the property owners behind there. The map that was submitted shows eighteen feet of easement. Staff is recommending a minimum of twenty-four feet to provide adequate two-way traffic in that area. The applicant has indicated that twenty-four feet would work for their plans. Anyway, that's a, a formal request to discontinue the right-of-way, so we have to go through the statutory process, so the public hearing will be the first meeting in January, when that would be actually considered. Also, as part of the project, they have a couple of other site improvements that, as proposed, would encroach into the street right-of-way. In the area where they're gonna add that parking lot to the rear of Steve's Pizza, they're gonna have a small, or a low brick wall for signage and screening of the parking lot. As proposed, that would be located between the sidewalk and the right-of-way line, but it would be within the right-of-way. Along Main Street, they're gonna have a fence, some brick pillars that could be used to chain off the parking lot for special events, similar to what's done on Second Street. Those would be located within the right-of-way. And actually, in front of Steve's Pizza now, they have the raised sidewalk and the guardrail in front of the building. Technically, part of that right now is within the right-of-way. So they're essentially proposing to extend that in front of the building addition. Since that's new construction, that would be within the right-of-way, that would have to be approved. And then the last one was part of that parking area. They have a an accessible stall that has a required width next to it in order to provide the adequate width that marking would be within the right-of-way of what's remaining for Jones Street, so they're asking for approval to allow those encroachments. So that would also be considered at the same time in January. Any questions?
Wasn't there one for some pillars so they could actually close that off on special events?
Right, on, on Main Street, correct.
What's the width of the street, east to west?
Jones Street right now is thirty-six feet.
Thirty-six feet.
Is any, so I'm trying to wrap my head around this. Jones Street's mostly the parking lot, right? It's not really used as a street by anybody.
Well, to me, it functions more like an alley, but it is used to provide access to the rear of the properties within that block.
There'd still be that alley going east-west, right? That would provide that access?
Essentially, if you, if you go through the, the pickup lane for Steve's Pizza and take a right, it's in that area is where the Jones Street exists.
So Jones Street does not extend to Main Street?
Correct. It, it originally did as part of the Platte, but that northern one hundred and thirty-two feet was discontinued back in nineteen seventy-five.
Okay, so it's where garbage is stored now, basically, in the access garbage?
No, that's where the angle parking is along the side of the building. That used to be a tree.
I'm looking at the maps and I'm still confused. Okay.
Do you have an overhead map at all that you can talk about, talk from?
Well, Dan's got a lot more maps if you'd like him to go through it. Otherwise, it'll be a presentation on the January meeting.
Would you like to have some more information this evening?
I mean, Joan, the part of Jones Street you're talking about, the only connection it has right now to any public right-of-way, public street or public, is the alley? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so it goes onto the alley that goes between, that goes alongside Hardick Drug. So it's just a little square or a, a, a rectangle back, kind of in the middle of the block.
Right.
And right now, it is used by whom, every?
To get to the parking behind the ticket would use that right-of-way. There's a apartment building off of Court Street that's owned by the applicant, uses that. Eric Cleveland Insurance Office uses that to get to the rear of their building. Next to them is a building owned by Jake Rennecker, who has access, rear, rear parking behind that building. And then Jane's Family Hair Care, which is on Court Street, they have a little parking area behind their building, would come in off of that right-of-way.
Okay.
Joe, I have a question. Why, why didn't the applicant want all of Jones Street, rather than just that square of thirty-six by thirty-two? In other words, extend it all the way down to the alley?
Well, you can ask them that, but the, the answer that they submitted when we first met was they only needed part of it for the area where the, the utility and the, the equipment was gonna be located. So they took the, the northern thirty-two feet because that's where the property owners on both sides, it was under the same ownership.
Well, it still would be, if you extend that to the end of their property where the alley, east-west alley is, I guess you vacate. Couldn't they just vacate that because you're allowing for to have a twenty-four-foot right-of-way anyway? Am I understanding this right? Because I, it just doesn't make sense to me that you only take the thirty-two feet, you don't, and you also own the building that's in front of the, where it says Jones Street. Why wouldn't you want all of it?
The applicant is here, so I think it might be appropriate for him to come up. He did indicate he would speak if there were questions.
Yeah, the, the other thing before he gets up there, there, as I mentioned, there's a, a statutory process that has to be followed. The other reason for doing that is if you're discontinuing right-of-way via petition, all the property owners that have frontage on that right-of-way to be discontinued have to agree to it. So if you take all of it, then you also involve the owner for the ticket. So if they're not in agreement with it, well, it can still proceed, but I think it's gotta be a supermajority vote of the council. So that's, it affects the process.
Okay. Yeah, I, I still would like to see your presentation.
That'll be fine.
Dan Dressens with Delta Three Engineering. We're working with John Patacos on his Brew Pub and Restaurant Edition on the east side of the current Steve's Pizza property. At last night's plan commission meeting, these exhibits that were presented, I had some handouts as well for that meeting last night. I wasn't sure if I should have those for tonight's meetings, but I'll just kinda go through the, the board today. So we're, the, the, how I started out last night was talking about what's existing and what's not, and hopefully Barb on the far end, you can see it. But what I had done is I had outlined all the property owned by John in red, the neighboring properties in blue. And what you can see there in green are the two properties that will be raised as part of this project. The one off of Main Street is the current viewpoint screening property, and then the other one on the west, the southwest corner of the property is the Elements former office supply building.
Can you show us where the red line is? I can't see it from here.
Okay, so, so John currently owns several properties. So there's the main Steve's Pizza property.
Okay.
Then there's the viewpoint screening property. And then there is the, I think it's fifty South Court Street.
Thanks.
So those are the three properties that are currently owned by John. So the area that's in kind of the pinkish color, that's the thirty-two feet they were requesting to be discontinued, which is an early thirty-two feet of Jones Street. I think as staff mentioned, we, John currently owns both sides of that right-of-way. Our concern is providing an easement access to the properties that abut Main Street and South Court Street that have parking in the backside, which would be Eric Cleveland property, the Rennecker property, Jane's Family Hair Care property, and actually John's property himself, that's the fifty South Main, South Court Street, excuse me. If we were to discontinue all of Jones Street, as Joe mentioned, it'd require a supermajority by the council to obtain all of that right-of-way so that we could guarantee that an easement was placed across there for access. And there's an existing eight-foot or eight-foot-eleven easement, depending on what document you read, that connects this former Jones Street, or, excuse me, the current Jones Street, down to Court Street. And that is how the properties that, that have their rear parking, that's how they get to them. Now, the Eric Cleveland property, we found out today, actually has an additional eight-foot width in there as well, but only that property does, but ultimately, that's still the access point. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to be able to vacate a portion of Jones Street, still allow access to those properties, which we have to do. We can't just, we can't shut them off. And to have them come off of Court Street, if you measure, take a tape measure between those two buildings down there, it's about eight foot two inches, maybe eight foot eleven inches in spots. Very tough to get a, a vehicle through there, so we need, we do need to provide access to them. By doing it this way, we guarantee we can provide an easement to do that. We bring a, a second property owner in there. We can't speak for him, so he may not have the same intentions as us to, to provide that easement. This was an exhibit we presented. This was a blow-up of some of the improvements. Probably the, the keys to this is the blue area, which is essentially a thirty-two-foot by one-hundred-foot three-story addition that will be added on to Steve's Pizza. To the south of it will be a stair tower to access all the levels, and behind that is the the area that we're gonna have utilities, mechanicals, and the silos in the future. There'll be a screen wall as well. We're going to try to improve the traffic patterns through this area. Right now, there's, there's angle parking along Steve's Pizza. There's parallel parking along the viewpoint building. There's a driveway coming up through. When you kinda get out into the other area, you just kinda, kinda, kinda swerve in between all the cars. The idea here is that we'll have one-way traffic coming off of Main Street. The Hardick Drug, the alley by that is one-way going from Court Street west to Chestnut Street. So basically, you'll enter off of Main Street, enter off of Court Street, and then exit onto Chestnut Street by Hardick Drug. That way, there's only, really only a couple of directions of flow. Now, in between Hardick Drug and the easement that goes to the back of the buildings, Eric Cleveland, Renneckers, Jane's Family Hair Care, there will be a stretch of two-way traffic through there. That's where Joe had come up with the idea of going with a twenty-four-foot easement versus our eighteen-foot easement. We had selected eighteen-foot easement initially just because it was half of the right-of-way of Jones Street. But with the twenty-four feet, does provide better two-way traffic. Also, does not affect our proposed utility and silo corridor through there. Drainage in this area is very important. It's an issue based upon, if you go back in there, it's all one-hundred percent hard surface. Water kinda runs everywhere. So we're gonna be putting a curb line on the east side of the property with storm sewer that will connect the roof drains from the Steve's Pizza property, main building, also from the Brew Pub and Restaurant Edition, and then collect the surface water. That water will be piped to Main Street. And then there will be a curb line in there as well to intercept that water. It'll prevent the water from coming, from flowing onto the Cleveland, Rennecker, and the Jane's Family Hair Care property. Also, it'll prevent the water, once it gets past that area, from coming into the Eric Cleveland building, which is a concern of them because they have a slab-on-grade right now. So we're gonna have to work on getting that curb at an elevation where it will, will not allow that water to, to, to go into their building. Parking, right now, there are approximately eighteen stalls on site. Because of this right here, we're gonna have eleven stalls on site, so we're gonna lose seven. However, there is provision in the city's code that we can obtain a parking lease within a quarter mile of the site. There, we have that lease obtained, or that agreement at least in, in principle obtained. It's gonna be about two blocks away at Mount City Bank. They have a total of thirty-two in one lot and fifteen in another, which will provide enough for the thirty stalls that are required because of the new addition, plus the number that we're losing. John is also working on, with some other business owners in the area of obtaining either leases and/or the actual property for closer parking as well, so that's something that he's working on. As he knows, that's a, a big concern of everybody's. This map here was kinda showing the, where the encroachments are. The first encroachment that Joe mentioned was a signage wall along Chestnut Street. This would be a screen for the parking that is on the south sides of the Steve's Pizza Kitchen. It would also allow, you know, a sign to viewpoint there, saying, and we would have arrows on there. I would assume there'd be some information about where the drive-through would be at coming along the south side of Steve's and then for exit. That, that's where we're gonna leave Jones Street in there. The, the handicap unloading zone will just... And the handicap unloading zone will just slightly encroach on to Jones Street right-of-way. So, we want to get permission to do that. Probably the, probably the biggest, I wouldn't say the biggest concern, but just the biggest thing that, that didn't necessarily draw flags, but just everybody was like, what's going on here, is along Main Street. When we plotted out the right-of-way of Main Street, the buildings along Main Street from Chestnut Street to Court Street are all into the right-of-way, varies from about one foot down at the corner of Court and Main to about three feet at the corner of Chestnut and Main. It's an old section of town and the buildings just got built there. As you go further east on Main Street, everything matches up better, but for some reason, this block is just off one to three feet. As Joe mentioned, we are going to extend the building front of Steve's Pizza, so everything's in the same plane, including the ramp, the sidewalk, and the stairways, as well as the canopy, so it all looks the same. And then at the corner of Eric Cleveland's building, we'll also be putting a brick pillar with some fencing on it as a screen for the parking off of Main Street. And as mentioned, if, for a special event, if they want to close down that parking lot, we can do that too with a chain. So, the primary reason for that is for aesthetics to screen that parking. And I guess we talked about traffic for a little bit, that was the, the next one I had. So, as a real quick overview, at the next, at the public hearing on January twelfth, we'll have this up on the screen so they can see it better and go over some more of the details as well. So, are there any questions at this time?
I have none. Thank you very much.
The, no question. I was going to ask you about the storm sewer next to Cleveland property.
Mm-hmm.
How close would that be to the Cleveland property?
The storm sewer piping or the curb and gutter?
Both.
The curb and gutter will be about two to three feet away from, the back of the curb and gutter will be about two to three feet away from his building, so that we have enough room to construct it without interfering with his building. And then the storm sewer piping will be underneath the curb and gutter, so that, so the edge of that also will be two to three feet away.
My next question is, how deep will the storm sewer be?
Because we have good grade through there, it'll be probably two to three feet deep.
Two to three feet?
Correct.
Anyone else have questions?
I just have one thing. It's a little bit confusing because it says that the planning commission will consider their, their request at the December seventh meeting. We already met, I don't know if Joe mentioned that to everybody, but we did have a recommendation for the council to approve this. So, I thought everybody should know that, if you hadn't, if you didn't know it.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we do have two people who have asked to speak. Both against, the first is Chris Cleveland.
Okay, you guys, I'll keep this quick, I haven't had my dinner yet, but I do want to start out with-
I'm sorry, Chris, we usually ask you just to give your name and address.
Oh, I'm Chris Cleveland, I live at one forty-five West Main Street, live and work there with my husband Eric. And I do want to start out with just one question, or two really specifically, is I wanted to know, what is the current capacity of Steve's Pizza? How many people does it currently, is your capacity? I mean, you must know.
I don't think you can.
Well, what's the capacity going to be of the new? Okay, what will be the new one?
I don't think you can get into details when we're in the middle of conversation.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just move on. It's just from what I've gleaned from, Delta Three had come to our, our business and met with us, and what I gleaned from them is that Mr. Patacos is hoping to start hosting larger events such as receptions, you know, big events like that. And I understand, you know, unfortunately, the addition doesn't include additional parking and will actually have less stalls. However, to solve this problem, Mount City Bank is leasing, you know, their space for them, and that meets the city's requirements for parking. However, I believe that probably most of his customers will be more inclined to park on Main Street and the surrounding area. Let's say on a Saturday afternoon, he has a wedding reception, and I don't know how many people, maybe three, four hundred, five hundred people, are they really going to go down to Mount City Bank and park there and hike up the hill, which it's more than two blocks? I think they're going to park in the surrounding area. I, I think Mount City Bank doesn't even have the capacity for that many people. So, in effect, they're, they're going to be parking on Main Street in the whole downtown area on a Saturday afternoon and really curtailing the ability of customers wanting to shop downtown to get to those businesses. And I think we all know that people are pretty funny about, well, I was going to stop, but there was no parking downtown. So, you know, to me, that's a big, big deal. What are we going to do? Oh, sorry, Driftless Market, couldn't find a place to park. You know, that's how that's going to go. And, you know, and I, I got to be safe, you know, obviously, Eric and I have a lot to lose here too. It's going to be extremely difficult for us to enter and exit our home and business. Will fire trucks and ambulances even be able to get to us if we need them? There will be no privacy at all anymore on our deck or three-season room. And you know, guys, this, we live above our, our office, but it's our home. It's not some little apartment in downtown Platteville. We've made this into a home, and it's really quite nice. Now, I'll never be able again to open the shades or windows in any of our bedrooms because, boom, guess what's going to be looking right down in me, my bedrooms? Could be looking right down into my house. Steve's hopes to block off the Main Street entrance for outdoor events. Well, you know, yay, a mini Second Street right outside my back door. What will stop those people from spilling over into my driveway? How noisy will it be for all of us that are living back there? Will this increase the vandalism and garbage problems back there? Probably. When customers parallel park next to my building, will they damage it? Are they going to come up over the curb? You know, it's pretty tight, big trucks and SUVs. If they pro, if they really properly park in the space that's allotted in the abstracts, are they even going to be able to open their doors to get out of the vehicles? Or are they going to just allow and come back further out and block the drive-through space that's there? Because, I mean, that's a problem, you guys. And the next thing is, how is this going to affect the value of my property, Jane's property, Jake's property? How, how, what's this going to do to us? What is it going to do? Now, in closing, and I'm going to make this quick, but I would invite any of you who would like, I would like you to physically come and visit the area. I can give you a bird's-eye view from my outdoor upside deck, and you can look down there, and it would be great if you could do it on a Friday night or a Saturday night and see just what a little space you guys are talking about here. You know, if they're, do we really, if you want a place for receptions and all that, it seems like you guys have got Pioneer Properties, there's ample parking down there. I mean, wouldn't that be a better choice? And that's it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jane Stark?
Hi, I'm Jane Stark, and I own Jane's Family Hair Care on thirty South Court Street. I have also a few concerns. One of my big concern is the safety. Up above my beauty shop, I have a rental. And with an old building, we have stairs going up, and then we have built a platform in the back of the beauty shop. So, in case there's a fire coming up the stairs, the renter will have to go out the window and be on this platform in order to be picked up from the fire department. Now, I don't know if the large fire trucks are going to be able to get back there after all this project is done, I, I really don't know. But that is a concern, we, these are old buildings, fires can happen, and I would hate to be responsible for something like that. Also, like Chris said, with the parking, I'm very concerned about the parking. South Court Street right now has ten businesses. We have, I think, sixteen or seventeen parking places on South Court Street. Now, the city behind the building on Jones Street there, there's either four or five city parking places. We do use those. Sometimes my customers use those to come into my back door if South Court Street is filled up. I had to do that the first year that we bought there. I bought in February of nineteen ninety-seven, and they tore up South Court Street, redid the whole street and all the sidewalks. And I thought, oh, my gosh, what am I going to do with my business? It's not going to survive. Well, it did because I had them come in my back door, and I used the parking in that alley back there. So, if we lose those four parking places, plus Steve's Pizza is losing, what, four or five of his own, there's eight or nine, that's half of the parking on South Court Street. That's a lot of parking. If we don't have parking, our customers aren't going to come to our businesses. That's the number-one thing you need for a business. You need customers. Where are those customers going to park? We have a huge issue with parking here. A few years after I bought my place, the Main Street Committee came about, and I thought, all right, they're going to do something. They sent me a letter. What do we need? I said parking. Every time I got a letter, parking. Boy, they're going to do something. No, they did not. Nothing has ever been done with parking. We need, if we want our town to develop and get larger, we're going to have to go with parking ramps. There's no if and buts about it. We have to. If you want Pioneer Ford down there to grow with businesses, we're going to have to have adequate parking. Businesses can't survive on Main Street because of the parking. We see businesses all the time coming in and going out because people don't want to walk either. I would not want to walk from Mount City Bank up the hill to Steve's Pizza. I would not want to do that, and I guarantee you, most of us wouldn't. We would take the soonest, the quickest route to get there. We would take the parking places around the area before we would go to Mount City Bank and park and walk up there because we are lazy. That's just how it is. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I understand this will be on January twelfth. Joe, is that correct?
Correct.
The last item is Chapter Twenty-Six Amendment, updated floodplain maps.
This is mostly a formality. FEMA did provide updated floodplain maps for all of Grant County, the ones for the city of Platteville. Although they're new maps, they did not do an additional or a new study or engineering to go with them, so they're essentially the same boundaries as before. They have different legends, different coding, different base map, but it's technically the same map as before. However, we are required to adopt the updated maps in order to maintain compliance with NFIP, so this ordinance would officially adopt the updated floodplain maps.
Questions, anyone?
Yeah, I do have a question. It says the impact of adopting this will create, is there a, is there an error here? The impact of adopting this proposal will create minimum bicycle parking regulations for new development.
You can just ignore that sentence.
I'm reading this and I'm looking at these maps and I'm like, I, I just don't even get how these connect with each other. So, I do read the material, so if you put that in to see if anybody was actually reading-
He was just testing you.
Wasn't that part of our telephone that we talked about?
Testing, I'm the one that passed the test.
That's trying to keep Colette happy and get the information to her in a hurry.
I see, okay. So, it has nothing to do with minimum parking regulations in new developments?
Well, a floodplain, you'd probably have minimum parking, I don't know, there might be some value to that.
So, in the next version of this, we'll see that change, no doubt.
Anything else?
Can I ask? No, I was just confused.
All right, that's the last action, our information.
Go to adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
Second.
Motion on the second, sorry, Barb, they beat you down on this end. Move up.
Nichols?
I want to get ahold of these guys.
Yes. Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Seebuth Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Merry Christmas, everybody.